For the invocation, follow by the Pledge of Allegiance. Gracious Lord, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this beautiful day and all the opportunities that you've given us. As your disciples, we're strengthened and encouraged by your presence. Be present with us this evening as we go about the city's business. Guide us in all that we do with the words and the deeds and reflect to you in your goodness. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is Monday, June 18th, 2018, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Councilor Board order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item this evening is the approval of the agenda. I'll call on our city administrator. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council. On your desks this evening is a revised agenda which adds a resolution accepting donations for artistic bike racks, and that will be on the consent agenda.
Thank you. If there are no other additions to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Follow up, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Jim. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. That motion carries. Next item, under public hearings, we will need a resolution approving property tax abatements for Fergus Care Center LLC located at 1010 Maryland Lane, and I will call on Amy Baldwin, our Economic and Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Before this evening is a public hearing related to a property tax abatement for Fergus Care Center LLC at 1010 Maryland Lane. This property was built in 2008 by Catholic Charities, and as you may know, Catholic Charities did suspend their operations at the facility in 2015, and the 18,000 square foot building has been vacant since that time. The city of Fergus Falls, along with Otter Tail County, have received a request for property tax abatement to offset a portion of expenses related to the renovation and reoccupation of this facility. The applicant is Fergus Care Center LLC, and the anticipated tenant of the building would be the state of Minnesota Department of Health and Human Services Care Operations. These operations had previously been located in an Otter Tail County-owned building at 1174 Western Avenue, and the county is working actively with the new user to occupy this facility on Western Avenue, as we've spoken on previously. When the property was occupied by Catholic Charities, it was a tax-exempt facility because Catholic Charities as an owner and then the qualified use was also allowed for it to be property tax exempt. After the building went vacant, that qualified use left, and so even though Catholic Charities is a nonprofit entity, the building did become taxable during this time period that it is vacant. A number of uses have been looked at for this building. It is a pretty specialized building in how it was built for the type of operations that are offered there or had been offered there, but the new owner who is looking at it is a private entity that would be a taxable use even though the tenant would be a government user. So if it proceeds, the proposed buyer of the building would be, again, a for-profit user, and the building would remain taxable, along with significant improvements that are being anticipated. The total project is being looked at over $3 million to purchase and renovate this facility for use by the state of Minnesota. One unique characteristic, as we know through the Port Authority, when you lease to the state of Minnesota, there is always a 30-day out in their leases if funding would no longer be available for the programs that are offered there. That is a standard lease condition within state of Minnesota leases, and so that does provide a much higher risk for the buyer who is looking to purchase and cover the costs of those renovations that the state of Minnesota is requesting for that. So while it is a 15-year lease, there is quite a bit of uncertainty and risk associated with taking on this project. This reoccupation of the building and renovation will bring a number of benefits to the community. It would look to increase the tax base based on the renovations that are being completed as part of the project. It would provide additional employment opportunities. Estimated between 30 to 35 employees would operate out of the building. It would fill the vacant building, which I think is one of the key pieces, and keep it on the tax rolls. There were some other options looked at as far as who would own the building prior to this private investment group coming forward that included other government entities and nonprofit units. So in that case, the property would have gone back to tax exempt should one of those owners had come forward to take on this project. And finally, to have continued access to our local residents to the services that would be provided through the use by DHS. So the requested action this evening is to authorize the tax abatement and give direction, if the abatement is approved, for staff to develop a more detailed development agreement that would come back before the council for approval that would outline more specifically the terms of the abatement that would be granted to the developer. In concept, we're looking at a 10-year abatement that would be provided to offset, again, a portion of those costs not to exceed $149,999. We're actually looking at a number closer to $100,000 over that 10-year period, but again, those final details would be analyzed, and we would ensure that the rate, the return that the developer would be receiving over the course of those years would be appropriate and commensurate with the risk and investment that they're making in the overall project. Otter Tail County Commission will be holding a public hearing for the proposed county tax abatement portion of this project at its meeting on June 26th. Also, a preliminary term is that the first year of assistance would be in 2020, and as you may recall from the previous tax abatement use, this does require a levy of a property tax by the city to fund it separately, though it is paid out of the, would be tied to the taxes actually paid by the property owner. It is a levy placed on through the city. So be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we'd be looking at doing a more detailed analysis if that direction is provided by the council for the tax abatement, and this is a public hearing.
Yes, we'll have a public hearing in just a minute. Any questions? So is the amount, the abatement being requested, that's 100% based on the current taxes? Is that for the city's portion?
Mayor, councilmembers, it's approximately that amount. We would be looking to finalize that dollar, but it would not exceed the current taxable city portion of the taxes currently generated.
Any questions? Let's go ahead and, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure. Let's go ahead and open the hearing, and then we'll bring it back to the council. I should have waited for my question, too, but...
Additionally, representatives of the development group are here this evening.
Okay. So let's go ahead, and we'll open up that public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the issues, please step to the lectern and state your name. We will close the public hearing. Now it's back to the council. Go ahead, Anthony.
I've got a couple of questions, obviously. The first thing would be, you know, can we tie any, if we're going to give abatement, you know, obviously the old jobs-e program tied it to a number of employees and a wage structure. I mean, I think that would be something that I would like to see in a final agreement. Obviously, you know, 30 to 35 is kind of a broad number. You know, if we're going to give abatement, then I think, you know, we need assurance of something in return. And then I'd like to understand the position of the county and obviously the school. Are they both going to abate their portion as well? I know obviously tonight we're just talking about the city, but you know, the city shouldn't be in this alone.
Mayor, councilmember Hicks, I'll start with your last question first on the, as I mentioned, the Otter Tail County Commission will be holding their public hearing on next Tuesday, the 26th, though that would be theirs. There has not been a request to the school district to abate their portion of the taxes. And as far as conditions within the development agreement, we certainly will work to ensure that there are appropriate conditions as far as jobs and wages included within that. We do need to keep in mind that the developer has a tenant who is a separate entity, so it gets a little more difficult than a private owner who also owns and operates their business that would be receiving the abatement, but we will certainly have that discussion of what's appropriate for annual checkpoints before payments would be made. As we do with other development agreements, we would look at ensuring at a basis that taxes are paid and then whatever other conditions we negotiate with the developer.
Any other questions from the council?
I have one, Your Honor. Is there a, the $3 million, is there a breakdown on price or cost of the building itself versus what's going into improvements?
Mayor, councilmember Appert, yes, there is. In the application submitted, the purchase price is approximately $1.5 million, and then looking at over that in total other investment from the renovations and improvements to the building.
Okay, thank you.
Wonder if we could hear from the developers as to the type of care and, you know, what is the focus of the group, the home or the care facility?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Jim Schlepper. I'm with Inventure Properties. This is my associate, Austin Ruley. We represent Inventure Properties. Just a quick 30 seconds on who we are. We are a group that puts together commercial properties around the state, mostly in central Minnesota area. We do a lot of development in downtown St. Cloud buildings that we rehabbed under historical credits, put offices into. We are also a long-term ownership entity. So while we do that, we also own every one of these entities that we do or a piece of it. So we are not just somebody who develops the work and then lets it move on. We actually own them ourselves. We manage the properties ourselves. We take care of them ourselves. So glad to be here tonight, so thank you for that, and we'll answer any questions that I can. The first question was really about the kind of care that's being offered here. The, I lost the word here. The governor for the state of Minnesota announced back in March a very strong opioid support program. With that process, one of the things that's happened with the Fergus facility when they looked at it was the concern of, is this a viable facility? So they actually shut down their previous operations here, went through a very strong statewide referral program and analysis program, actually four different stages that we've been kind of waiting to do this until they passed, and they finally approved the last stage that says, yes, they want to reinvest in this program and in this territory. So when that happened, that's when we approached them about this particular facility, believing that it fits their needs better than where they were at before. So their intent as a state is to restart up support for chemical dependency in this location as a state-provided service. And so it'd be a 16-bed facility along with all the ancillary care that goes with that that would happen in this location. Being able to pretty much use the building as a shell, but they have a lot of very specific requirements, which is why it takes about $1.4 million to rehab the building, everything from door systems, security systems, control systems, new computer systems that we have to provide for them in order for them to provide that care.
One other question, Your Honor, follow-up. Typically, you, I think, operate over a dozen of these, or?
Not for the state.
No.
No.
This is unique in this...
This would be our first one with the state of Minnesota.
Okay.
We do these facilities to places like Centricare and St. Cloud area, things like that, but this is our first one with the state.
So in terms of the rate structure and what the state reimburses, or the rental from the state we're talking about?
Yes.
Do you know if it's typical that the state needs the municipality to give up its tax portion in order to have a reasonable rent so you can actually make it in this? And my, you know, my question's getting at, you know, that we lose then some of the ability to pay for any kind of calls or city services to that through this abatement for a period of time. So somebody has to make that up, the citizenry. So I'm trying to figure out if the state is aware of, that we get to, we give this up, you know, and the state doesn't have to pay as high a rate back, or, you know, the rental doesn't have to be as high, right? Because we're giving up something. So I'm wondering if you know much about that in the world of, you know, the state requirements?
As far as the state goes, we've had the conversation about the process. Similarly, this process that they just went through for renewal at the state level puts a lot of onus on the landlord of the things that they require as a state, so the state doesn't have to fund it, so they're spending their own dollars wisely. So a lot of the things that we have to provide as a landlord in this particular instance are things that they have built into the lease that rate has to encompass. A good example is, we are required to refresh their technology throughout the entire 15 years. That's probably $150,000 to $200,000 a crack when that happens. Their lease doesn't go up for that. We have to encompass that so that they're not spending more state dollars to do that. So there's a balancing act that they're trying to do as well to say, we don't want to come into this enough to spend a bunch more state dollars on it. As for the facility, I don't know, but I would have to suspect that every facility is unique, whether it's in downtown Minneapolis or out in Fergus Falls or wherever it might happen to be. I think the subsidies that are required to make that work all depend upon everything from, are there many other users for that facility, so the rents are, you know, what are the rents in that area for that kind of facility? How does that all work? I do know that with this process, they are obviously trying to very much, they're concerned about the cost per bed. Even with this abatement, what they have told us is this will still be their most expensive facility to operate of this type in rural Minnesota per square foot. So we have been having very, I can't call them difficult, but very detailed negotiations as we've tried to get to this lease rate, and that's going to be acceptable to them to put the facility here. So hopefully that answers your question, councilman.
I'd like to offer that, Your Honor, but I'd also like to add that when the staff works on this, that the conditions in the agreement allow us to look at some options as councilmember Hicks mentioned, the number of employees actually that are in the facility, but you know, we're looking at 30 to 35, right? That that's, that we look at that as being one of the conditions of the abatement, and also the time limit. So I'm wondering if, I'd like to have that as the staff give us some options so we know how much we're actually abating and if we have to abate, you know, so we get something back, like we can say, yeah, well, we're going to get, there'll be this many jobs, and that helps offset services we provide. So that's, you know, at the, as a motion, as part of the ordinance I'd like to, or the introduction of this, I'd like to suggest the staff work on that so we can see that when we come back. Is that reasonable, you know? So I'm making that motion.
And I'll just answer, as Amy did, just for a portion of that, is obviously it is the state operations. So while I know they're bringing jobs from zero to something, they've told us 30 to 35 is their first estimate. I know they operated in this area before with the facility, so that should give them some ideas. That'll just be our challenge as the developers, is we're not the operator. So we'll work what we can at the state to try and see what we can accomplish.
We can bring that back as soon. So we have a resolution? We should get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. Amy, did you have any comment on that? Is that workable?
Mayor, councilmembers, that is. I would ask that there be a specific resolution offering the abatement because that is a particular resolution, and then a second motion or resolution related to the additional conditions of the development agreement.
Sure. We can split it. So I'll offer the main one, and then let's vote on that first.
The first resolution is just...
Just to accept the...
Approving the abatement. Everyone clear?
And Darren, second at that rate.
It's not approving the abatement, it's approving the discussion of the abatement. So it wasn't that, it's not just to, I mean, you're looking for a resolution to negotiate forward. You said about negotiating the contract, and that's, so that's different than, and then the contract would come back to the council for approval.
Right.
So we're not approving the abatement. We're approving, you know, we're approving staff to move forward in developing the abatement document.
Mayor, councilmembers, I think I can clarify. So with state law around tax abatements, you, we do ask for the resolution approving the ability to do a tax abatement. You approve the terms of what that abatement is within the development agreement. So nothing is being obligated, but we would ask that the resolution presented be approved, which authorizes us, you know, or the city, to provide an abatement. We will then bring back the terms of the development agreement that would outline the actual authorization of abatement.
Terms surrounding the...
Right, yep. So by approving it, you're not authorizing, we're not able to give, we're not going to be giving an abatement.
I think we need clarification on the language. I'd like to see the language exactly. I'm not prepared to approve an abatement. I think, you know, you're saying, you know, it's the terms of negotiation of the abatement. There was, it said there was a draft resolution attached, but there isn't a draft resolution attached.
Perhaps.
It goes from that to overlay.
Well, apologies if that was not included. It was...
Perhaps the resolution is authorizing an abatement subject to approval of the development agreement.
Correct. That would work.
Okay. So then it's one resolution, not two.
Sure.
Fair enough?
Sure.
Yeah.
Scott?
Fair enough.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper. Yes. Fish. Rachel. Yes. Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is the warding of bids. First bid to award is a, we'll need a resolution for bid, public improvement 5321, the 2018 Mill and Overlay project. Brian Uvaro.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. As presented to the last committee of the whole, June 7th, we opened sealed bids. We received a total of three bids. Mark Lee Asphalt and Paving out of Alexandria was the apparent little bidder, submitted a bid amount of $139,363.10. The engineer's estimate was approximately $187,000. So based on the federal bid prices, I'm also requesting a secondary action, too, and I'm requesting a file of change order to add a maximum threshold 25% to the original, to the base contract as per statutes. So if you look in the table before you, you'll see the total projected cost breakdown, which includes the base contract, the construction cost increase, contingencies in engineering and soft costs. I estimate the total project cost about $216,400. We have sufficient funds in the levy that we annual levy amount for this type of work, and we're also carrying over an additional $54,000 to include and cover this cost 100%. So at this time, requesting award of the construction services contract to Mark Lee Asphalt and Paving and authorization to add additional street segments not to exceed 25% of the base contract.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? I'll offer that, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Brent, roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Appert. Yes. Fish. Yes. Rachel. Yes. Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved. The next resolution we will need to pass is a resolution warding bid for public improvement 5322, which is 2018 Seal Code project. Again, Brian.
Thank you again. We just recently, on Thursday, received quotes for the annual Seal Code Improvement Project. We solicited out to four contractors. We received one quote from Caldwell Asphalt, their proposal an amount of $89,964.74. Engineer's estimate was $88,600. I spoke to a few of the other contractors, and it determined that did not submit a quote, and I was pretty much on their work schedule and everything. However, based on the comparison between the engineer's estimate and what they had submitted, I'm requesting we award the construction services quote to Caldwell Asphalt in the amount of $89,964.74. Once again, sufficient funds that we budget annual levy for this type of improvement are sufficiently, we have sufficient balance for this.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions?
I'd like to, so did you say you got an indication from the other contractor as to why they didn't submit?
Yeah, I talked to some, and some, I'm just based on workload and everything. There seems to be a lot more seal coating than, you know, the county itself does a lot to itself.
Okay, thank you.
Darren? I'll offer that, Your Honor. Thank you, Darren.
I will second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next item is a proclamation declaring June 10th through the 16th is Relay for Life Week, and it's past Friday, Relay for Life held their annual event at the college, and we did, I did read this proclamation out there, the entire thing, so I'll just briefly say that whereas anyone is at risk for cancer with men having a one-in-two lifetime risk and women a one-in-three lifetime risk of developing cancer, and thousands of people die each year from cancer in the United States, and it goes on, but I'll say now therefore I, Ben Shire, mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim, June 10th through the 16th, 2018 is Relay for Life Week in the city of Fergus Falls. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's a copy in your packet, there's also one on the board, and I believe, I wonder if you say we're going to add the...
Yes, the artistic bike racks are on the consent agenda as well.
Got it. So if there's any of the items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to talk about individually, we can do that, Rod?
Number four, please.
Before any other items, if not, I would offer, entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda with the exception of item number four. I'll offer that, Your Honor. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper. Yes. Fish. Yes. 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 Yes.
That resolution is approved. Rod, you had a question about item number four, which is a authorization of a housing task force?
Yes, Your Honor. My first question is, how does this relate to our planning commission? We have a task force seeking to be created. How does it relate to what we have as a planning commission for the city of Fergus Falls?
Amy, I know you talked to this item on Wednesday morning. Do you want to just briefly give a update for those who weren't here Wednesday?
Mayor, councilmembers, hosted recently out of direction from a priority that the Economic Improvement Commission had identified, the city of Fergus Falls EIC and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority hosted a workshop to start the conversations around current and future housing needs, conditions, and market availability in Fergus Falls. That workshop was held last month with, as a first step to bring various facets of the housing community together to collect each of their perspectives and experiences to start to establish a foundation to answer and address the question of what do we need to do to improve the quality and supply of housing in Fergus Falls? It was a broader discussion with various attendees from nonprofit development, realtors, other government entities that attended the workshop, and identified within their discussion six key areas to, that would be for follow-up action. One dominant one was the creation of a housing partnership task force and looking at how can we work together to bring skills and abilities and resources in an alignment for addressing the quality and supply of housing. So reviewed with the workshop, or at the workshop, were some models from other communities that had a co-op in one case that builder representatives, developers, others came together to create a development company to support, in that case, single-family growth. We looked at, you know, just as examples, and recognizing that each community is unique in what they can bring to the table from their various partners. The suggestion really was, how do we dive into that further beyond a two-and-a-half-hour workshop? That did have great engagement. Present on Wednesday were at least a half a dozen attendees of that workshop here in support of the formation of the task force to express that they saw that as a really key next step to advancing this discussion. As far as the... that as a really key next step to advancing this discussion. As far as the planning commission's participation in a, in this discussion or effort, certainly if there was a need from zoning to be thinking about how do we need to appropriate zone properties, or looking at future land use, how to designate future land uses to be in alignment with what those needs are anticipated to be, whether it's multifamily, single-family, twin homes, you know, that we're, we're looking at future land designations, that would be a very appropriate role for the planning commission to play. Can I answer more questions if that?
Yeah, I guess I'm not clear as to the answer. My concern is that a separate housing task force apart from the planning commission, I can see if it's attached to it, or if it's working under it, but I can't see it as a separate task force that, that there's a need for it. And the second thing is that we have, we had a housing study in 2014 that showed we need 200 and some units. We've already built over 200. And so I'm curious as to the role of the EIC. It seems tangential that we're using, that we're going after a housing study when we need to get businesses and other development going. So I'm kinda curious about why is the EIC forming this task force, and why isn't the planning commission supervising it?
Mayor, Councilmember Speedall, the EIC isn't forming the task force. They made a recommendation from the results of the workshop. They had particularly identified the need for supporting single-family growth in the community, as we'd seen numbers from a single-family perspective of new housing starts decline. It was a point that was identified through that group, and this was a next step to bring subject matter experts, again, from realty, realtors, developers, other subject matter experts together, and they wanted to continue that discussion and made the recommendation to form the task force. The results of the workshop, which were included in your packet, were reviewed with the EIC, and they specifically made a recommendation of their planning session in May to bring this to the city council for further direction. Felt it was more appropriate to be housed under the city. Certainly, the planning commission could be an oversight group on that, but is, would be completely acceptable.
And any other questions? If not, do we have a resolution authorizing the formation of the housing task force? Thank you.
I'll offer.
Scott?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Brent, it's a motion. I'm sorry, it's a motion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Aye.
That motion cares. Thank you, Amy. Under ordinances and resolutions, we will need a, we'll have a second reading of ordinance 69 seven series boards and commissions. That's been to committee and to the council. So unless anyone has any questions, I will ask for a roll call.
Your Honor, just, one more, sorry. Would this task force think under this? No.
Oh, under the.
No, it'd be a short term.
So who appoints the task force then? It's not a, so it's gonna be a committee outside of this then?
Yeah, I think task forces, I don't know that we've necessarily addressed them in, but they're, short term, I don't know that it's addressed in the.
Right. Sorry. Go, go for it, man.
We'll ask you to.
Yes.
Who are we voting on? Excuse me? The second reading of ordinance 69 seven.
Oh, okay, fine. Thank you. Yeah.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
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 Speedall.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Second item under ordinance and resolutions is a first reading of ordinance 77 series amending city code 2.27, board of zoning adjustment in the appeals and planning commission. City Administrator Andrew Brenson.
Your Honor, members of the council, when we were talking through the boards and commissions and the appropriate changes to those, this was one of the changes identified. This will eliminate the zoning board as it combines both the zoning board and the planning commission. There was a desire of both boards to move in this direction, and it'll help the efficiency of the process for our developers.
Just stay mindful, zoning and planning. We just need someone to introduce that.
I'll introduce that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Item number three, we'll need a resolution accepting the donation of a dock from the highway terrace park neighbors for public use at Godell Park. Do you want to call our parking ex-director, Steve Plaza?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to have the council, council approve a dock placed in Godell Park by the terrace park neighborhood, highway terrace park neighborhood. They've adopted the east side of Godell Park, and they've been managing that area for public use for the past eight years, and I'd like to see them recognized. And we'll put a dock out there. It'll be city property, and it can be used daytime only. No overnight mory.
Thank you, Steve.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. And we'd just like to say thank you to the highway terrace neighborhood group that's put this together, so.
They've done a fantastic job for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you. Item number four is a discussion resolution regarding raising the city council salaries from $650 per month to $800 per month, and the mayor's salary from 1,075 to 1,300 per month, effective January 1st, 2019. Councilmember Fish, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. I, I brought it up Wednesday at the committee of the whole. It's been since 2007 that the, that the council has had an increase in wages. And if, if you would go through, and I had this sheet made for everybody, and it was in, in your packet. It shows that, that the raises that we have given our employees up to this point would raise the, the salaries of the, of the council to $815.84, and to the mayor at $1,349.27. My, my resolution was to raise the salary of the council members to 800, and the mayor to 1,300. The reason I bring this up at this time is because the only way you can raise salaries of council members is to do it before an election, and then the salaries would not take effect until after the election or the start of next year, 2019. I don't know many places where they go for 12 years without an increase in wages. And we have many more meetings, much more time now than we did back in 2006 to '08 and through that area. So at this point, I would like to offer the resolution to raise those salaries.
Get a second, and then we'll go ahead and have discussion.
This has been an issue with me for quite a long time, and.
Hang on one second, Brent. Let's just, let's get a second, then we'll, then we'll be able to discuss, so. Someone wanna?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, go ahead, Brent.
Personally, I'm gonna abstain from this because I do not agree with voting my own raises. I don't like it when our government does it, and I don't like it even for me to do it. I should, I do believe there should be another way of handling this, and I understand according to the charter, this is the way to do it. But this is something I personally don't agree with. And when I look at the amount of, I've even had people bring it to my attention. I've talked to, to Andrew a few times as far as the amount of times when we come into a council session and there are empty seats. And we're looking at asking for a raise, and I've even had people come to me and say, I'm watching this on TV, and every time I'm watching this, I'm seeing empty seats. And now we're asking for more money in order to, and we're not even fulfilling the old ones as far as coming in and doing our meetings. So I personally would like to see the charter changed and find another way of doing this, but at this point, I'm gonna have to abstain because I cannot vote my own raises.
It's a funny business we're in to vote on. That's, to say the least. But I would encourage you not to abstain. If you, if you feel that you don't want to vote for a raise, I would vote no. Because I think that we all have the responsibility to, to vote on this, because it is, it is a charter. So I would encourage you to, you know, unless there's a conflict of interest, but I mean, I, there's, I mean, it's one of the few times there actually is a conflict of interest.
So I would just encourage us all to vote, vote your conscience if you, if you voted up or down. But Darren, did you have a comment?
Do they have to be done all as one resolution?
In what sense?
In other words, city council raise and mayor raise as two separate resolutions, or is it all have to be under one?
I think it's one.
I have it as one.
Can I ask for a point of clarification, Your Honor? I know we didn't really discuss the life insurance at the committee of the whole. We had asked Bill, and it's on here. So by reading this, are we also implying that, well, because we don't currently have life insurance on council members, correct?
I do not. No, we do not have life insurance on the council. I don't have that in this resolution.
What's the line for 2,400 for budgetary impact increase? What's that for, then?
Your Honor, councilmember Arneson, that would be if you were to adopt the council getting life insurance as well.
So that's not part of?
It's not part of the resolution on the table.
Okay. Thank you for the point of clarification.
Your Honor, I just addressed the, what Brent talked about, people being absent. And with our lifestyles have changed a ton, you know, and I, I don't know how many times I've been gone, but the morning, when we went to the morning committee of the holes, it's a little tougher for guys who go to work earlier, and then also we had to change it. And so I, our lifestyles are completely different than they used to be years ago in 2006 and '07, and vacations come and play, and, you know, I try to plan them around my vacation, but it's really hard to do. So I don't agree with, you know, you guys, we're gonna be gone a few times a year, but it's, we stay up on it so much during the week. I mean, there's a lot of time spent during the weeks between the, the council meetings. I mean, I wish people knew how much time we all spent on this, you know, nights and whatever. So I just, I mean, I'm not gonna vote for it. I don't, I, I'm not up for a raise. I think I, you know, we could spend that money someplace else better. And, I mean, we, not that we don't deserve it, it's just that I'm not, I'm not gonna vote. I will, I'll vote no on it.
Rod?
I was looking at the council pages for cities with populations between 10,000 and 20,000. Minnesota says it averaged 6,220, which is 520 a month. We're already getting that. I'm also going to vote no for the reasons that I believe we need to get something done for Fergus Falls, and I think, personally, I think it, I'm not here for the money of it. I, I'm here because we have to get something done for Fergus, and I don't think we, I don't think we've really gotten anything done in that sense, and we're ready, we're getting closer, but I, I can't vote for it. Sorry.
All right. We ready? Go ahead.
I mean, I would echo this sentiment of what's been said. I think at this point in time, with the economic scenario of Fergus Falls, with the number of closings and job losses, I think it's not appropriate for us to award ourselves a pay rise. And, and I would agree with what Scott's saying. You know, I, I may miss the odd meeting, but I can assure you that I put in a lot of hours, you know, outside of, outside of here, you know, just, just not, you know, just because I'm not on TV, because I'm not the best-looking guy in the room, so.
[laughing].
I'm more effective in the field.
We just like to listen to you.
All right. So I, I too will be voting no.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
No.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
No.
Rupert.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Arneson.
No.
Speedall.
No.
That resolution is defeated. Next item on the agenda is a resolution accepting purchase agreement from American Covenant Housing Group for the east and west detached portions of buildings 23 and 27 of the former regional treatment center. And I'll call on Kent Madsen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Is this on? Okay. Here to talk about a form of a proposed purchase agreement, which is intended to further the development of the detached buildings up on the historic RTC campus. The proposed purchase agreement, which would need to be approved by the council, follows the framework of the purchase agreements that we have been using since 2007, when Schlossman's acquired the property. The arrangements are, the city would make the property available, but the property would be acquired in its as-is, where-is condition, meaning that it's on the buyer to do all of their due diligence. And in the event that there's any defect in the condition of the property, it wouldn't be on the city to address, it would be on the buyer's risk. So it's as-is, where-is, consistent with the arrangements that have been undertaken in the past with Schlossman and the developers that undertook to develop the six residential properties. In terms of title, the agreement is to make the title evidence available, and the obligation is on the buyer to do title due diligence. The city would pass on, indeed, passing on its rights in the property, no more or, and no less than it acquired from the state. But again, it's basically as-is, and the obligation on the developer to do their due diligence and get their title insurance policy in place. As with the other arrangements, which are governing all of the RTC properties that remain in the city's name, because they're encumbered by bond proceeds, there's a mechanism that has to be followed for the property to be sold at not less than fair market value. The property, we believe, will appraise at a fair market value of $1, because the value of the property, taking into consideration, the value of the real estate, taking into consideration all the activities that need to be done to address the condition of the property, create a negative property value so you can sell it for a dollar. The problem is, the appraisal that we have is too old to rely on, so that will need to be updated. But given where the buyer is at in their process, the thought was to not undertake that appraisal yet, but rather as they get closer to determining whether or not they will close, to order the appraisal so it doesn't become stale again. We believe that the appraisals brought to current will yield a purchase price of $1. If the appraisals yield a purchase price of greater than a dollar, the city could cancel the purchase agreement, and the developers could cancel the purchase agreement. So when the appraisal is completed, there'll be discussion depending on what the value is. But it's contemplated that it would be conveyed for a nominal sum, a dollar, $10, things like that. But beyond that, the arrangements are basically going to follow what had been previously followed for disposition of the RTC campus, and the warranties or the promises that the city is making are very few. Number one, a broker has not been hired to market the real estate. Number two, there's no pending action regarding the real estate, which we know to be true as well. Number three, that the city has the authority to sign the purchase agreement and approve it, which if you take this step tonight, the mayor and seat administrator will have that authority. And then we make some representations about wells and private septic not being on the property, which we know from prior due diligence. So this agreement has been reviewed by the developers and their team. They approve of it, and it is for basically two parcels which surround the two detached buildings on the east side and the west side, and approximately two acres. A survey has been completed to plat out those two tracks from the main Kirkbright campus, and that's in the process of being forwarded through the approval process as well. So that's the nature of the agreement. The recommendation is to approve the form of the purchase agreement to then advance the developers' process of moving forward with their due diligence, which still has quite a few things to check off of their boxes, but this is a step that you can take to support it.
Thank you, Kent. Any questions for Kent? So to summarize, it's two parcels and one purchase agreement, correct?
One buyer, two parcels, one purchase agreement. It may be separated later on, but right now it's one, one buyer, one purchase agreement.
Got it.
Your Honor, the other question?
You were first.
Kent, I was just, under, obviously, it says Kirkbright parcel property, and obviously, you're really talking about buildings 23 and 27, but that's not specified in the agreement? Do you need, I mean, at this point in time, it, it reads like you're gonna sell them a whole lot.
Yeah, we, we talked about that, because the old form used to call it the Kirkbright campus.
Yeah.
And so if you go down to what we're selling them, it goes down in section one to define it as the replat of Lot 1, Block 2, which we later on call the quote property, or the Kirkbright prop, Kirkbright parcel property.
And that becomes the two buildings?
That's the two buildings, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Rod, did you have a question?
Yes, Your Honor. One of my questions, Kent, is on the process. You may not be able to answer this, but whether we're hiring or getting into agreements, I'm curious about the process. This, has this come through the planning commission?
I don't believe the purchase agreement has come through the planning commission. I believe the plat is going through the planning commission.
And then the agreements that we're making with the group, has the planning commission looked at those as far as the housing levels and things? Because once we decide, you know, we decide to sell, then it's on a basis of a certain kind of housing, right?
Yeah, the, the first step is the purchase agreement. The second step is the development agreement, which will go through the council to approve exactly what the project is going to be. So when they come up with the final details, the development agreement will specify what they're required to do for housing in terms of number of units, those types of things. So more detail to follow on that later. This is phase one.
Does this, does this make it impossible to do if it doesn't, if, if we were to say, well, shouldn't it go through the planning commission so they can look at the details before we make this? Is it, does that hinder the process that we're in right now to have it go through the planning commission as well?
I, from the, from the property conveyance side of things, it, it wouldn't. You could run that through the process to approve the development, but this, this would approve the conveyance of the land, subject to the development agreement, which you could run through whatever process before it comes back to the council. whatever process before it comes back to the council, the council desires.
You can add?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Speedo, I can add to the role of the planning commission. So, they would be looking at the subdivision of the land through the plat process, and that's what is underway, as, as Mr. Matson represented. So, that would be, not talking about the use yet, but the, defining the parcels that we're talking about here within this purchase agreement. The other role of the planning commission would be to look at the rezoning. It is still in an RA zone or a holding zone, waiting for future uses to be defined. So, the type of zone, rezoning would also go through the planning commission at a future date. Again, tied to, as we continue the discussions on the overall campus, as well as some other uses, to make sure that we're setting the stage for the appropriate designation of land through the zoning process. So, those would be the two actions specific for the planning commission to make a recommendation on.
Yes, could I respond to that, Your Honor? My, my question still remains, and that it's similar to what Councilman Hicks brought up with the previous agreement, that if we're entering into an agreement that in fact entails something as the end point, then once we enter into the agreement, and you haven't had the planning commission involved, their participation is simply rubber stamp. And I believe in the process that we should try to begin with the end in mind. We know everything that wants, that they want to do on this property. We know the kind of housing, but because the planning commission hasn't been able to look at it, I feel we're degrading their role, and we're bypassing something. So, as long as it isn't a problem for the agreement, and it doesn't hinder what we're doing with, with helping them get this property, I'm going to suggest, I would like, I would move that we let the planning commission discuss this, so that they've had a chance to look at the end result before we vote, and then make them basically superfluous. So, that, my motion is that we let the planning commission look at as long as it doesn't hinder the agreement that we're making in the long term.
We'll see, we need to get a second on that motion.
Maybe I just make a comment. Is, our charter does not allow you to adopt this resolution tonight anyways. We have to wait at least 10 days, under our charter, to sell real estate. So, you can't adopt this resolution tonight. You can introduce it, but you can't adopt it. And maybe in the interim, this, you introduce the, the resolution with instructions that the planning commission meet between now and your next meeting, and have an opportunity to comment back to you. But you would, you would then have the resolution come before you at the next council meeting for vote.
Okay, I, I think that's, that's a good compromise. We have a member of the planning commission here. Is that workable, do you think, with the commission?
Well, I guess I'm really...
Al, would you?
So, Mayor Ben and Council, I'm not here on behalf of the planning commission, although I'm part of it. And I thank you for that comment that you did have on their behalf, on our behalf. But what I'm here for is, when it comes to, as far as a citizen, what type, and what are the ratios of this housing are they trying to develop at the RTC? Is, how much of it subsidized? How much is it is for profit? That sort of thing. And to get this started, and then what is the end? What could it be? Because I know we do have a, a apartment complex in town that has, that has happened, and there's quite a few calls for service at that apartment. As a citizen, I'm just concerned that it could be a situation, that it could cost the taxpayer much more money than we try to court a developer here to get them to do something. But in the long run, if we would look at all the services that it's gonna take to make this happen, it's not worth it. In my opinion, we have to have business and industry with it. And if there's no business and industry with this housing development, I think you've just got more apartments. So, that we really, I don't know if we need it anymore. I guess there's been studies done. I know we talked about it on the planning commission some years ago, but I don't know what they are right now. But I guess as a citizen, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the planning commission, is that I would like to see business and industry to go with housing if it's gonna be housing. And I don't think it should be housing alone. That's my opinion. I do know that there's been other people that I've talked to in the past that have seen the situation and what could happen. There were other people who wanted to develop housing up there. And the comment from that person was, you're gonna have a real burden on your taxpayer. It's gonna be a tax burden. And I guess that's what I'm concerned about. And that person I heard it from would buy land worldwide. So, I guess that's my concern, that we don't jump into something without getting all the facts, that maybe if there's something with business and industry that can go with this, I think that's a great deal. But there's gotta be some safeguards built in that, too, so it can't go to a certain point where it's, where it's all subsidized housing. I think there's gotta be some safeguards in there for the taxpayer. That's really all I wanted to say. So, thank you for letting me address.
Absolutely. Thank you, Al. So, Ralph, back to you, propose the resolution tonight.
Well, I mean, if you wish to move forward on the purchase agreement, someone should offer a resolution to introduce it. It should be seconded, and then the vote would occur at a later meeting. Place it on the next, next city council meeting, and with instructions that the planning commission should review.
Has an opportunity to comment on the, on the proposed. And the execution of the purchase agreement happens in conjunction with the developers' agreement, correct?
Yeah, the, well, the purchase agreement would go first, the development agreement would then come second, which is, my understanding was for the developers to move the ball on their project for they needed a purchase agreement to submit their tax application package. So, this was accommodating them moving forth their development, but reserving the things for the development, zoning, those types of things for a later date to follow the right process.
Sure.
So, this would be step one.
Mayor, councilmembers, I mean, just to clarify, there, those, what I'm hearing from comments is the questions for the planning commission are beyond just, you know, this purchase agreement just references those two parcels, which, you know, that are to be developed. Those other questions about the details on the use, as Mr. Matson referenced, are not going to be developed until the development agreement is generated, which is forthcoming, not in the next week. I mean, that's, it is, they're starting, this gives them that assurance that they can continue that due diligence and pursuing various funding sources and programs. So, I don't know that a week, you know, from a planning commission perspective, would get the dialogue that I've heard is desired. So, I don't know if putting a timeframe on that is helpful. They certainly could review the purchase agreement, but I'm not sure what, you know, if that doesn't get to the depth of what I'm hearing is the questions.
Did, Gene, go ahead. I'm gonna, call, go ahead, Gene, if you have a comment.
I'm Gene Schmidt. I'm a member of the Friends of the Kirkbright. I am not speaking for them. I'm speaking for them, for myself, as a resident of the city of Fergus Falls. I've heard several instances tonight that the buyer, developer, has to do his due diligence on this, that, and the other thing. Has the city done due diligence to see if he has the financial capabilities to take this project on? Thank you.
Back to the council. So, what, what are the wishes of the council?
Your Honor, I, I think the purchase, this, I mean, this initial purchase agreement is basically, as you say, enabling them to move one step forward on their development agreement. And, and it's not going into, it's not binding, because we don't have a development agreement. But within the development agreement, would then answer some of the specifics about what they're actually going to do, what the facility's gonna be, et cetera, and the timeframe. So, you know, and that's, at that point, then, you know, that would be the time when, you know, the planning commission, you know, should get involved about what is, what is the detail of what type of housing they're proposing, and, and the numbers. Is, is that correct? Right? I mean, will...
Yes, yes. That's when they would have more of their plan developed, identified. And that's the process that you would typically follow when you have a planned development up on this type of property in that neighborhood.
So, it's gonna come back, it's gonna, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
So, and make the, and make the resolution that we accept the purchase agreement.
I'll second. Any further discussion from the council? Roll call, please.
You can't act on it. It's been introduced, but you can't act on it tonight.
Just been introduced.
First reading. These 10 days. And so, I would basically, it's been introduced.
Sure. Well, July 2nd, we'll act on it. July 2nd.
Yep.
Your Honor, could I just make a comment? You know, we, we attended a planning commission meeting sponsored, I think by the League of Minnesota Cities, on the role of the planning commission. Some of us took half a day to do this, and we realized the importance, the statutory importance of the planning commission. And it has a much greater role than we've given it in Fergus Falls, because it looks at the whole picture. It looks at what we're doing. It looks at how we develop. Now, to let them sit on the sidelines, and again, I think, I disagree with Councilman Hicks. I disagree with the statements that have been made. If you trap the elephant by the toe, you still have the whole elephant. You're gonna end up with the whole agreement by, and unless we let the planning commission do it, I'm just, I'm just saying, unless we have another subsidiary motion or alongside that says we want the planning commission, we're instructing the staff to meet with the planning commission, then I believe we're ignoring the role of the planning commission, and we're treating them like, like they don't matter. And so, I, and having spoken to members of the planning commission, having spoken to members of the planning commission, I know whereof I speak. So, I'm gonna vote for introducing it, but I think the council is, is shrugging some responsibilities here about process, which we've done before, by the way. We haven't followed good process. So, I'm gonna, that's, that's enough. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is the resolution authorizing issuance of healthcare facilities revenue refunding note. Kent?
Thank you. Bill Sanmore isn't here this evening, so he asked me just to tee this up for the council. Lake Region Healthcare is undertaking to work with the local bank to refinance some of the bonds that were issued in 2010. And the opportunity to refund those bonds is in front of the council tonight. So, the proposal is for the council to adopt a series of resolutions that would start the process of, of authorizing healthcare facilities revenue refunding note, Series 2018 Lake Region Healthcare Corporation, in an amount not to exceed $11,650,000. And that's to assist in refunding the city's bonds that were issued in 2010. The financial arrangements are similar to the arrangements previously. The city's full faith and credit is not standing behind these bonds. This is facilitating Lake Region placing these with a private bank. So, it's basically conduit financing, very similar to what's been done on the last issuances for development of the cancer center, the new medical office building, and the like. So, the process also, because these funds were issued under some legislation that was available in 2009 and 2010, these bonds and the refinancing does not count against the $10 million limit that the city typically has to issue under the revenue, tax-exempt revenue bond financing. So, it's a fairly unique type of refinancing that's only available because the original financing was from 2010, and the request is for the council to adopt the authorizing resolutions, which would then allow staff to move forward with final review of the documents and a closing, when all of the bonds can be noticed for redemption, which will be in probably 45 days or so.
Thank you, Kent. Any questions? For that?
Jim, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Anthony. Roll call, please. Oh, Tom, go ahead.
Just for the record, I'm gonna abstain as an employee of Lake Region.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Abstain.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Item number seven is the resolution approving the purchase, demolition, rehab, and resale of a property located at 320 West Alcott Avenue. Guy Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Back in May, I believe it was, we became aware that this property was gonna be available via an online auction. We toured the property with a local realtor, and in consultation with Andrew and Ralph, we decided at that time we were gonna make an offer on the property, and then come to you after the fact, just to get your approval to purchase it. But we weren't successful in that. We were outbid by about $6,000. That purchaser has now realized what he bought, and is now offering it up for sale again. And the sale price is what we had initially set as our, our limit price of $10,500 that we were gonna offer online. It's a 136-year-old structure. The structural inadequacies are numerous in this building. It's full of mold. We've had a couple local people look at it that were interested in buying it for needy people, rehabbing it for some needy folks, and they, one didn't even wanna go inside. It just is so bad with mold. So, we've got $25,000 in the building department's abatement line item. We're seeking to use the $10,500 to purchase it, and it would be land held for resale. So, we would recoup our costs if you would authorize also RFP to seek a developer to purchase and redevelop the property.
Thank you, Guy. Anthony?
Do you want me to up the resolution, and I'll ask a question?
Sure. You got a resolution in a sec? Go ahead.
And so, are you looking to demolish it?
Yes.
So, so then you would be looking at a piece of land to sell?
Right.
That you might, I guess.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Guy. The last item on the agenda is a presentation of claims. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $2,827,066.26. And I would all entertain a resolution to pay those bills. Thank you. Scott, Jim, any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There is no old or unfinished business. There is no new business. So, the last item, I, Andrew wants to show a video that was produced. Amy, do you want to introduce the video? This was debuted last Thursday at the Ford Fergus Falls community celebration.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. As we discussed for a couple of meetings there, Ford Fergus Falls had held a community celebration last Thursday morning, had great attendance, a great array of speakers talking about really positive things to make a difference in Fergus Falls. And, you know, the intent of the effort through, elevated effort through Ford Fergus Falls is to inform, unite, and excite our community about all the great things we have going on. This video had great participation from the community. Everyone who was asked to participate did. And it highlights our key areas of business, arts and culture, education, recreation, and wellness. So, with that, you can go ahead and watch the video. From our earliest moments. To how we live.
How we work.
And how we play.
We move forward.
And though sometimes we go forward alone, community means pushing forward together.
We're stronger together.
Together, we celebrate our wins.
And accept our loss. But together, we can make life more beautiful. Than it already is.
Join us and inform, unite, and excite our community.